Give me your heads up, it is going to be madness.
And Mayor, I think we should continue and say this is for a Ford dioxide. And other time and it's that the federal government and the state hasn't even set a standard for yet, but we're trying to get ahead of the curve by getting the stuff in place and starting as soon as we can. But it is, I've heard numbers of, in certain communities of twenty, twenty-five million dollars to be able to purify what was in the dioxide.
So, just to fill out the conversation a bit, the state has recommendation for it, but it's not yet become official. But at the levels being offered, significant investments at the, either the well itself or at the well field, where you can put one treatment facility for two wells, it's not decided yet. But these are millions of mayors alluding to, could be as much as five and a half to six million dollars per well field or per, per well. So, this research, innovation is facilitating our discovery and analysis of our water chemistry and will help us in association with our consultants move our plan down, anticipating that at some point we have to act based on the information gathering. So we're not waiting until decisions are made to act, we're acting now.
One of the other things I just wanted to mention is from that Moody's report that's outside. Many of the people who are here tonight, you come to a lot of meetings over time. And a lot of you talk about the amount of money that's spent, a lot of you talk about a lot of the numbers. We heard a lot of people get all upset when we were talking about the 2% cap. There's one sub-part of this Moody's that I think really stays a while. And again, we do spend a lot of money in this, and we do do a lot of things in here. And I can go through the list, which I've done many times, CUC and the oil fields, four times the amount of rules we pay, everything else we do. But the section here in this report says debt and pensions. Now, I really want you to listen to this one. Overall, the debt and the pension liabilities of this village are low. This is not us, this is Moody's. The net direct debt to full value is .3%, which is materially below the US median and remain the same between 2014 and 2018. So that's the last five years. The Moody's adjusted net pension liability to operating revenues, US median, is 1.3%. And for the last five years, our debt and pensions have been .3%. So please believe, we want to tell you that this board cares about taxes, cares about the money that we spend, and cares about having a solid balance sheet. And again, this is not us saying it, this is not some press report, this is Moody's. And those are concrete numbers. So, I take a lot of pride in that, I just wanted to point that out.
Great. The other items, agenda items that...
Well, Ford reports done? I think it would be appropriate now to obtain a motion to suspend rules to add, I think, two new items to the agenda. I'm...
Say what the second one is.
Well, the first one is a motion to suspend rules.
Yes.
Okay, we take a motion on that. We suspend the rules also, Mayor.
Just the, between our seconds, if all was in favor, unanimously approved.
Okay, now there's a motion to add to the agenda, the change work order concerning the pool work that was discussed. And I think the second item is...
Right, the first item is the, as we discussed, the bonded pool project, the change orders, the amount of seventy-six thousand five hundred twenty-one. Do you want to do another one?
No, you can, yeah, with the one on hand. Yeah, I also want to talk.
The motion to approve those change orders as described. Trustee Delaney, seconded by Deputy Mayor Truvey, all those in favor. Again, get us, you know it's hard sometimes, get us a little more detail, and obviously get us some pictures and some work. I go to bed, but several of us may go down to do it. Second, I just kind of dovetails to what we were talking about in terms of the Moody's report. I would like a motion to approve a settlement that was approved, that was ratified today by the CACA rank and file group of our village workforce. They are our largest group of workforce members. The settlement, briefly stated, has no retroactive raises for the last five years. We have two going forward years of raises. First year is 2.25%, the second year is 2.75%. So roughly, we have settled a seven-year deal for a total of 5%, roughly, over seven years. There is a lump sum signing bonus for each of the workers, for about thirty-five hundred dollars for each unit member. That totals approximately five hundred and seven thousand dollars. We are converting, sounds silly, but one of the things we had to negotiate was a bi-weekly payroll via direct deposit. Everything has to be negotiated in municipal contracts. We've been funding that for about six years now. We are going to be using, we've already decided this, but we'll have unfettered ability to use GPS in our village vehicles. We will obtain health insurance contributions of 20% for all new employees, starting on day one of their employment through retirement. And we have settled a bunch of pending litigations and claims between the parties. So, it's a long road coming. It's been about seven years since we had a contract, so we're glad to get it done. But there's always more to do, and we will continue to work. And this is one of the ways we try to keep taxes lower than what they might usually be, or often be. So, if I can get a motion.
Before we do that, Mayor, I just want to mention, I think this could be, this contract expires in 2021, am I correct?
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, two years.
Twenty.
Twenty-twenty.
Sorry, yeah, twenty-three.
Twenty-twenty, so it's, it's, contract is good for the next two years, okay?
I get a motion.
I'll move it.
Trustee Delaney, question, between our seconds, that motion.
I get it.
A vote. All was in favor, unanimously approved. Thank you very much. Sorry, we didn't have much notice on that one, it was voted on today, so we wanted to get it done quickly.
Voted on today by the union.
By the unions, so. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. I think you're on trustees and mayor's questions, comments? I don't know if that's, did we gather enough?
Anybody has any questions or comments generally they want to bring up? One thing I do want to raise publicly, we talked about it before, but I want to make sure because it's relevant to things like the pool project and other things. But I want to make sure that we get rid of whatever we can in terms of old equipment, old junk, pieces of pipe, whatever it might be. So, I, and I think everybody here, wants that stuff out of here. So, let's get these places cleaned up. Dumps on Long Island are closing, let's get it out of here now. So, if we can make that a priority, clean up work areas, clean up places where this stuff has been stored, chairs, pipes, pieces of pipes, whatever it might be, let's get it out of here. Okay? Thank you. Anybody else, have you got anything to add? Okay, if we can move to citizens' comments or questions on agenda items. Hopefully we explained everything pretty well. I get a motion to approve the minutes of our... Oh, sorry. Agenda, I think.
Uh, agenda. Agenda PM. Good evening, Thomas Kaufman, Garden City resident. You're talking about a 1.4 dioxide. I think it's brilliant doing something about it. A news report on PBS this week, did you see it, Saturday?
Yeah.
We can talk about that, right? It's dioxide.
Yeah.
Water, right, we're all breathing.
Related enough.
Okay, so, well, it's, um, it's kind of important because we're all concerned about our health, and this is a carcinogen, am I correct?
But didn't you see on the agenda we're taking steps to do that?
Yeah, I think it's brilliant.
Thank you.
I'm complimenting you on, on taking that action.
Thank you.
And I hope that it continues.
Well, we're trying.
That's what we're trying to do. Somebody doing this, where is it in, did it, Bayshore? They have a project out there where they're actually cleaning it right now.
All throughout Long Island and all throughout the country, they're actually dealing with this issue.
There are pilot programs in place on Long Island now that are testing different methods of treating the contaminant one-foot acts. And there's some stuff in town where, I thought Western Nashville has one, and I think there's another one in Pittsburgh.
And Joe, haven't we followed each one of those?
Yes, absolutely, we've followed them, yes. So they'll be building... I actually attended a meeting last night with other water district superintendents and other water suppliers, where we received more information on the new filtration systems and how they can operate and what we need to prepare for and look forward to with this initial meeting last night.
Joe, is there any indication of like, you know, is there going to be any state aid or anything like that to, to... And for those of you in the room who may, or may or may not be as close to this, this is a very tricky thing to clean out of the water, and they're not even 100% sure of what the best way of doing it is.
Right, there is no...
What we do know is it's, it looks like it's going to be extremely expensive.
Yes.
Has anyone said that we'll get some funds from the state or anything, or...
The state hasn't committed to anything yet, they did talk about, and there is a lot of pushback because some of, you know, it's going to be, you know, we're hearing numbers of five or six million dollars per filtration system. You know, the village is looking at five, six, seven, eight of them possibly that need to be installed. Plus, there's significant annual operating cost to run these systems. They're very expensive to run after you install them. So, we haven't heard any concrete numbers from the state, they are talking about it. There is a small grant program now that we've applied for, but it's nothing significant, it's very limited. So we're hoping, if the governor adopts these standards, this new standard, that it will come with aid attached to it, hopefully. But there's been nothing promised.
I did, I did speak to, we keep in contact with our larger government entities. I spoke to Senator Schumer's office about three weeks ago. We spoke about water specifically, and the federal government does have funds for Water Quality Round Nation. I mentioned to the dioxide problem, and he specifically bringing this emerging issue. He's going to mention to the Senate to get it into legislation federally so that communities like ours could possibly tap into it. New York State has the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which traditionally has allowed small governments to get low-interest loans. It might not be free money, but it's substantially lower than most communities could bond for. Garden City might be an exception there, but nonetheless, they're low-interest loans. And so that might be an avenue that the state chooses outside of outright grants. It's just, it's still evolving, so we don't have all the answers yet.
Isn't there a possibility of tapping into a super fund? Because this is, there's a number of super fund sites that are already awaiting this problem.
No, no, no.
We have one of the best law firms in the country working on this. We have the foremost consultant in this area working on this. So, we're trying to figure these things out.
It's an ongoing process.
Just to you know, this, not only is it expensive, it takes a huge amount of time and effort. So, we don't just, you know, fix a bathroom, we're doing a lot of things.
What's important is that we're not following, we're actually trying to lead, get it out of the curve here, so.
Appreciate that.
By, by building our knowledge base now with this work, with the group season, the chemistry of a water, you know, the water at each site geographically will be different. And so the chemistry of what's being treated and how it's polished after it's been drinking, they're the site by site. So, we're, we're getting that testing done now, you know, that's what this is about.
Right. Appreciate it, thank you so much.
Sir, what was your address, just for the record? Sorry, what was your address, just for the record?
Stewart Avenue, Garden City. Thank you.
Anyone else on agenda items? Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting of February 13th, 2019? Trustee Hyer makes that motion, seconded by trustee Foley, all those in favor of the approval of minutes of February 13th. Unanimously approved, and fully. Thank you very much. Okay, so if we could move to a new business item, the, this should be a...
No.
So, it's 20, okay. Is Jim here? Come on up, thank you very much. Jim has volunteered to join our zoning board of appeals, I think that's the right name of the board. Let's give everybody, there are too many skinny on your background.
Sure, my name is Jim Van Scoid, 74 Meadow, Garden City. I have, my background is in geography, my final grad degree, I have a master's in inciting redevelopment from the Rutgers University. I also have my AICP, which is a professional certification. And it's kind of like a lower-level bar examination for planners, I hope you'll take. But I've been doing urban planning for about 10 years now, mostly related to transportation issues. But I do have a passion for urban planning and zoning, so I look forward to this, this opportunity and serving the community.
Thank you very much. My trustee Jim was recommended by the joint conference committee, happens to live in the east, but he's, he'll be an at-large member, and then he takes the place of Mr. Cunningham, who recently passed, but served this village for a very long time. And again, as usual, we want to thank Mr. Cunningham and his family for his services, but also want to welcome Jim, so if I can get a motion.
I'll move it.
Trustee Delaney will make that motion, trustee Aquinos, trusty Hyer seconded that. Unanimously approved, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point that, that because he's filling a vacancy from Mr. Cunningham's resignation, he will not be appointed to a full five-year term. He'll be filling out the remaining term of Mr. Cunningham's, which expires April 2020, 25.
Thank you. Thanks again.
Sorry it took so long to get to that.
Okay, I guess we will move to the consent calendar. If we need any further explanation, are you... Get a motion to, Deputy Mayor Truvey makes a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar, seconded by trustee Hyer, all those in favor. Unanimously approved, thank you very much. We're going to move to a work session, won't be long, sure, but we thought it was time to talk about it. What are we doing with pools? What's our rationale for the existing rules? Should we change these rules? Do we need to change rules? We're becoming burdensome for the zoning board of appeals to deal with them, and the building department. We get a lot of questions about them, we get a lot of complaints about the process. There's plenty of topics we could pick just like this, and we try to get to them as we can. This just happens to be one of them. Are we needed, other than Jim, who else is here?
Jim, hell, there is...
So, probably, it's not a great room for a kind of work session, but why don't we at least kind of lay out what's going on, generally?
Should we move up a little bit?
Yeah, that'd be great, if you guys come on up, and ADRB people too. These again, people who, fellow residents, neighbors, who take a lot of grief and put in a lot of time on the zoning board of appeals and the architectural design review board. Mostly, it's really zoning that deals with pools, but we wanted input from what we could get. So again, thank you very much.
If we can give that to Mike Proctor, he can sit there and give his best example.
Yeah. And I expected the siding to like, just thought it was a good time to have, spend a few minutes on...
Mr. Mayor, I just want to point out, the issue with pools, they go before the zoning board of appeals, not as a request for a variance, whether it be a use variance or an area variance. It's actually an application. So the way, the way your code is set up and the way it's been handled is that it goes before the zoning board of appeals has an application, and they have jurisdiction over that, whether or not the pool or any related work needs a variance, an area variance of any sort. So, that's how you get in front of the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board often puts conditions on the approval of the application. And I think the chairman might be able to speak a little bit more to that, but that's why he goes in front of the zoning board, the way the current code is crafted.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees, I'm John Villanella. I'm the new chairman of the zoning board of appeals, and I've been serving for 30 years. Pools are a really high impact. I am not an opponent of people installing a pool on their property, but I am a proponent of having a large enough property that your pool is not squeezed into a small area of the plot, or that by squeezing it in, it impinges on the privacy of neighbors. About six weeks ago, Mr. Mayor, I sent you and the trustees a letter outlining where we are presently with pools. And I'm not going to read the entire letter here, but I'll just extrapolate a little bit. Each of the members of the board of zoning appeals visits each property and looks very carefully at the placement of pools. We look at the lighting, we look at the privacy, we look to see that there's thorough obstruction all around the property so that the neighbors are not bothered. We look at the placement of the pool equipment, that can be noisy. Presently, we insist upon a six-foot fence all around the property. Now mostly, people do not want to put it around their pool. They put the six-foot fence in the perimeter of their property so that it's kind of obscured by greenery, and it looks better from an aesthetic point of view to their neighbors and to their friends who come to the property. Lighting is an issue. The board presently frowns upon lighting inside pools, and we try to keep it reasonable around rooms. The reason for this is to discourage nighttime swimming. Nighttime swimming can be very disturbing to neighbors and can lead to loud kind of gatherings. Now, this is an affluent village. This pool business is a function of our affluence. Thirty years ago, we got one or two pool requests a year. Now we get 10, 12 in a year. They multiply. The other thing that's happening is that people are no longer content with simply a pool. They want a separate barbecue table. They want a hot tub. They want, in some cases, an outdoor screening room. They want a kitchen outdoors. And sometimes they request all of those things. The fire pits are sometimes attached to chimneys. We've had requests for chimneys 14 feet tall. So, the members go to the sites, we look at it from every angle, we consider what's best for the village, we take testimony at the hearings, and then we vote. That's where it stands presently. Now, 30 years ago, Mayor Benak, our board, had a discussion about who would implement changes to the zoning code. I spoke then, and I feel now that you are the board that necessarily implements changes to the zoning code. We interpret it. And I think that that has been beneficial for many, many years. Now, the situation with pools, again, is a high-impact one. And I think we've done very well to individualize the process. But the final decision is up to you. And that's it, thank you.
We appreciate the angst and anger of this process among people who come before you. Partly what we're interested in doing is trying to take some of that away as well. Times change, we know that, some things we don't want to change, we know that. But like you, we get a lot of questions, comments, anger on the topic. So, I'm just trying to figure out, is it time to make some changes, whether it's one-time change, marginal change? That's all, we're not deciding tonight, we just wanted to have a discussion.
I can voice from, from the CPOA level, this is a hot topic. And even just hearing that summary, you know, why, why are we discouraging people from building what they want in their yard, in their own yard? Why are you saying, no, you can't have a kitchen? If someone drives by and believes it's too high for someone, that I understand. But the very fact that we say like, well, we don't want to put pool lighting in because we think that might be for night swimming, I mean, if I invest in a pool, I would want to swim until, you know, a normal decent hour, but I would certainly want it to look as great as possible and put in lights and things like that. I just, I think there's a very old-school feeling here that like, this should be frowned upon, we should have no, you know, amenities in our yards, but that's really not what people are looking for today. And we hear that, I hear this at every single CPOA meeting. People want to build the stuff in their yard, they want, you know, people don't want to go out, they don't want to go far from home, they want to bring all those things that they like about resorts and things to their own home. I don't disagree. I think we should think about this a little bit looser. I think we could, you know, consider some of these things as just, you know, the times change and people's house become, you know, it evolves. And what people's yards were maybe even 10, 15 years ago is not what the backyard is today. And I think, you know, there's angst around this because people want to do something, and for some reason, you know, we're digging our heels in. As long as it's not a public safety issue, as long as it's not, you know, something that's detrimental to the fabric of town, which is a side of your letter, I'm, I, I think we should kind of hear this out. I think we should, we should think about ways to make it easier for people and to make it as aesthetically, you know, pleasing as they'd like it to be.
I think we have to add to that though, I think we have, I think we have to add to that. I think we also have to see protection of neighbors. And some of the things that Mr. Villanella talked about, I think he and the board looks at so that neighbors get protected as well.
I have a couple of ones. First of all, I think that if we were to look at this from a board's part of view, one of the first questions I would have is, how many pools do we have in the city?
Just ask me, how many pools approximately?
Approximately, does it estimate, probably about 40? Okay, so we basically have 40 boards out of about 7,200 homes.
I would estimate over 100.
Let's say, Tom, what would you say, Dave? The first thing that I'd like to do is I'd like to have an idea of, you know, the number we have. The second thing which I think would make sense is to have a discussion with you, a meeting with you, so this way we can understand what the current restrictions are today, okay? Because I look at this, although I understand where President Manuno is going with this, I have two different concerns. The first concern I have is safety. And what ends up happening is, the world we live in today, just as everyone's mentioned, has changed. What happens is, is that parties can get out of line. To be an example, many years ago, my neighbor's son, who I won't mention, because many of you may know the family, son all of a sudden decided that they were going to have a party. And out it went on the internet. And what happened was a small gathering of 20 or 30 people turned into about 130, 140 people, to the point to where the police had to be brought in. to the point to where the police had to be brought in. And part of the reason that the police had to be brought in was because when about thirty or forty of the boys decided to have a miniature fight and as they were tearing down my bushes and everything else in front of my house because of this, I actually got involved. And the police came, it was a crazy situation. Problem that you have is that if you have pools, again, a concern that you have to have is where are they placed? And are they protected to the best that they should be? Because you don't want to have kids all of a sudden, shall we say, going in there. And a lot of times when you have parents who leave and kids have parties and stuff like that. I mean, that type of liability, you can't prove that quick if it happened. But my other point, which is more of a concern, is the aspect that trustee Delaney brought up is the neighbors. See, now, I grew up in Astoria, Queens. So for me, all I ever knew was Astoria Pool. You know, I didn't know anything about that. But when my family and I, when we, before we lived in Garden City, we lived in Franklin Square, and a neighbor a couple doors down from us, on a small piece of property, they were able to put in a pool. And it really changed things for the neighbors who were there. And it's like I go down, it had been over four years, I go down to Cape May. And one of the rules they have on Cape May Beach is you can't sit there and have a bladder on radio. It may be great for you, but it affects all the people who are around you. Now again, you may say, that's kind of ridiculous analogy between a radio and a pool. But the point that it is that if you have lights on a pool or if in the event you have something which would go until nine, ten o'clock at night, especially in a hot summer or whatever, it does affect the quality of life. And again, I understand there's a give and take with everyone. And I so appreciate that you can take those things into account. But again, I think that if we were to understand the restrictions, see what that was, and then also have your thoughts with all your use of experience, rather than we just look at numbers on a piece of paper, I think that would at least help me understand. Because at the same point, I think, the point that Luke brings up is a positive one, is that people are looking to invest in their homes. Things change, they like to do things there. And again, I'm all for that because I think that appreciates the neighborhood. I just don't want to do that at the expense of the people who live next to it. And to that point, I agree.
I mean, for sure, there's still, there's still a, you know, a reasonable hour when all parties come to an end. I mean, I don't think, let's not pretend that having a pool is like the only reason to have a cave. There's, you know, any patch of turf with no parents would probably do. I just, I don't think we should, or maybe it's time to look at those regulations around pools. I know in the letter too, they made mention about the automatic covers. Again, something we hear about in the CPOA a lot. They have the automatic covers, yet they still have to put up this really, really tall fencing. They have to, which by the way is an eyesore. I mean, I don't want to see a big fence. That's a neighbor, that has more of an effect to me than the one time you're going to stay up until ten o'clock with like your grandkids playing in the pool. You know, so I think we should look at everything and make the smartest choices possible. I just think that we should, we should look at these, not only just the pools, with all the things, the barbecues, the outdoor living spaces. That is the kind of fashion at the moment. And I think that we should look at that because people want to invest in their homes. And we should be supportive of that, not to mention that when they pull permits and do it the right way, I think everybody wins.
Commissioner Jackson?
I have a question.
You feel free to get up and jump in.
Could I ask a question? Commissioner Jackson, you have thirty-five years' experience in this village and police department. Are there any complaints regarding these pools? Are there problems with kids jumping into pools? I mean, off the top of your head, I know it's a...
Yeah, over the years, we do get calls, you know, from time to time. Sometimes it's unwanted children who go to pools. I mean, it's not often, but we do get it probably two or three times a year at least. Just off the top of my head.
You're talking about trespass situation?
Yeah, the trespass situation. We do get parties, but the problem, I like with graduation parties, stuff like that, but...
But there's not that many pools.
No, most issues we have, a lot, we get called are usually a trespass situation.
I mean, I appreciate your statement at the microphone. I think the idea of privacy and all the considerations, I have owned a pool. I have had an outdoor living area, not while I lived in Garden City, but when I lived in another state. And the requirements were much more than what you mentioned. You can have a cover, an electronic cover, automatic cover. You did have to have a fence. Not only did you have to have a fence, you had to have a fence around the pool. So I think if we're going to look at what our standards are today and look to see if you want to increase the price of pools and where they're going, I do appreciate that you take into account the size of the property, the space of the property, the lighting. Because I lived on an acre where I lived and had the kitchen and the fire pit and a huge pool. And I had to comply with enormous safety considerations. And all the plumbing that it took when it went out to the street. So I just feel like if we're going to look at it, then we need to look at things in a current standard, a current safety standard, current water standard. Where does the pool water go? How does it get filtered? Who's going to inspect the pool? How does it maintain? Not unlike our structures in our houses. So it could bring more requirements, not less, to have this privilege. Particularly in an area where most properties are not large. We don't have rolling mirrors in our backyards in most houses. We have big plots, but it's not huge amounts of vaguerage here.
I have a question about, that's of a different nature. I think that respecting the neighbors' peace and quiet is important. I think aesthetics are important. But I was surprised to read the sentence that said in terms of safety that virtually the fencing is put around the perimeter of the property. And I did recently sell a property out on the East End. And when we first bought it, that's what it had, fencing around the perimeter. But we were not able to get through closing without stepping up to more stringent safety issues. And one of them was, we had to actually bring a fence in. It was a little random property, but we had to, before we could get cleared, put a fence pretty close around the entire pool itself. When you have fences around the perimeter, this is a dimension that you might want to think about. When you have fences way out around the perimeter of a home and there are little toddlers in the house who might get out in the middle of the night, you know they do things like that, and walk outside and tumble into the pool. It's possible. It's not remotely possible, it's just a real possibility. And I was thinking when I read this letter, when we first received it, that maybe we could compare notes with some of the properties out on the East End because there are a lot of pools out there and see what their step-ups are in terms of safety. I think that would be an important dimension to think about also.
My name is Richard.
Mr. Mayor, I had no prepared comments, but if I speak, you'd want to see me up there, I guess? Okay, well, Michael Crowder, a member of the zoning board for many years. And I have the experience, as John does, that the concept of a pool in the backyard has changed over time. But I really just want to address a couple of things that we've heard recently, that it's difficult to get a pool, it's time-consuming, and we're not in the land of no with pools. I would say I can't remember a pool that was not approved, perhaps with conditions that the board wished to have. The concept of delay occurs when owners come and put a diagram on a piece of paper and they pencil in on a survey and they say, "That's where I'd like to put the pool." And that may be the, I'm exaggerating a little bit here, but that may be the sum total of their presentation. And then they find out that what we really want to see is a landscape plan because we are extremely concerned about the negative impact on all of the neighboring property. So, some of the architects, landscape architects or pool designers know full well what we expect to see. And they can have a hearing that goes smoothly, and we make some comments. And on the fly, they may say, "Well, you know, we're going to do this, this and that." And it can go in one night. And I don't think the building department in any way slows down an application for a pool just because it's a pool. I think they're treated in the same order as anything else. But we, the few standards that we have, from our point of view, don't, they're not onerous. I mean, the concept of no evening lighting or spotlights on the pool have served us well. And I don't think I've ever had, we've ever seen an owner who said, "If I can't get that lighting, you know, I'm not going to make this pool." And the other thing that John didn't mention, but he mentioned so many things, we always try to avoid the installation of a slide. We try to avoid the installation of a diving board. Now, it might sound like we're a bunch of dull people, but we worry about the activities that occur that can distract the neighbors. And again, we've met, I don't think we've had an owner say, "Well, if you don't give me a diving board, we're not putting the pool in." So, I think that we've been very, very reasonable. And I think first and foremost comes the concerns that we have for quiet enjoyment of our properties during the summer months. I enjoy my property in the summer months with the least amount of noise and interference and disturbance from my neighbors. And I'm blessed because I have that. And I think that's almost the single most important thing we have. So, I think we've been reasonable. I don't think we've stopped people. And I don't think we've made this process so difficult that people have a negative feeling about our process when we're sitting up there.
I appreciate your comments, but at the same time, you have to recognize that you're saying, you're trying to limit the amount of fun and enjoyment you can have in a pool. These are your words.
And I can say disturbance to neighbors.
And I think that's really strange. Like, just say no then. Like, if you want this black hole of a pool, no lighting, no slide, no fun, we want to keep our voices down while we're swimming in it. It feels strange that you guys feel like a pool is also licensed to be, it's not the Playboy Mansion, you know, people just want to have a pool and have some fun in it. I don't know that it automatically means like it's going to be, you know, there's going to be a block party.
I guess I look at it a little differently. But the same in the final outcome, but I guess I'm worried about arbitrary nature things. I think that puts you guys and us at risk. I think it also creates a sense of unfairness, whether that's valid or not. Believe me, nobody gets that more than us and probably more than me. So, I'm worried that there's nothing that says, you start off with, it's a structure. But it is treated differently. The structures can be three feet off the property line. There is no rule for pools. So one day, you could say eight feet. Another day, you could say twelve feet or forty-two feet. That's arbitrary. So I don't like arbitrary, that's my nature. I don't think it serves you well. I don't think it serves residents well. They should know, for example, there's a minimum of X feet from your property line that always has to be maintained for... I think that's a simple kind of change. It makes sense to me. And like I said, we're not deciding it tonight, that's just one of the things. Lighting, I can't disagree with you more on lighting. I can have a party in my backyard any time I want. Lights on or off, okay? As loud as I want until Kenny and his guys show up. And whether I have a pool or not doesn't make that different. And I know for a fact, people put in pools and then later put in lights. So what are we supposed to do? Trap into people's yards and issue what? I don't even know if there's a penalty for that. And then I can have lights on my house into the pool. So like that kind of thing doesn't make sense to me at all.
Mayor?
Yeah?
We heard opinions tonight that you would like some liberalization of certain rules. And we heard some opinions tonight that perhaps there should be tightening of other rules.
Yeah, no, we haven't had a conversation yet.
That is for the board of trustees to decide. We are, we are all Garden City residents of long-term standing. We have all brought up children in this village. And we feel that this situation that we have now has evolved over the years to everyone's benefit. However, you are the board of trustees. If you come to a consensus about certain changes, we will implement them.
The only thing that I would say is, I understand the point that you're coming from, okay? But for myself, I'm not knowledgeable enough to make an intelligent decision. Some people can say I'll make an intellectual decision any time. I don't have enough, I don't, I just, I don't have enough knowledge and enough experience. And that's where we need to see it through your eyes, where you could sit there and say, like I said to you, what are the current restrictions? What are your thoughts? Whatever, I may not agree with your thoughts, but at the same point, I need to be able to see it through your eyes. Because like I said, there's more to just having a pool. There's a huge difference between an above-ground pool and an in-ground pool. From number one. Number two, the equipment that runs that pool, the noise level that you may have on some of these things. The third thing you have is how people maintain. Now, for example, my mother, since she passed away, lived all the way up in Middletown. And her neighbor, they had a huge three-quarters acre of spot. They had a problem, neighbors decided to put in a pool. Don't bother anybody, don't care, plenty of roads, there's no difference. But what happened was, they made a decision that once a month, they were going to drain the pool. Get rid of all the old water there, they wanted that clean water. So what they would do is they would drain the water. And that water would run right down through four homes. And it literally killed one half of these people's back floors. Why? Because of all the chemicals and everything else that was drained. There were no regulations against that, okay? I mean, I've seen above-ground pools break. And what they do, the damage that they can cause, okay? But again, anything can happen, okay? I'm just saying to you, for me, I agree with you. I think that the thought process makes sense. I just think that, at least for me, I need to be educated through your eyes as far as what I'm looking at. And I want to make an intelligent decision.
I think you guys are on the right track. And I appreciate the fact that you look at each one individually and actually go out there. That's a good thing. I do agree with the mayor that maybe we need to have some set guidelines with that. I mean, which will take the arbitrary findings out of it. But I think you're, thank you for what you're doing.
Again, part of this is, I know you guys agree you're downplaying it. I know you do, okay? So, I think, I like standardization. I like where you can make things standard, it's part of the process. Somebody doesn't walk in the room and, you know, like you said, have some drawing on a map. No, no, we're never allowed people to be five foot from the property. Maybe that's a simple one. Maybe that's all we change, if we change anything.
Maybe we should make a suggestion and ask the board to come back with suggestions that they would like to see implemented. Because we need another session, as trustee Rollawork says, I don't know, vague idea.
I don't even know what the restrictions currently are?
Yeah, exactly. So I think maybe we should get a set of the restrictions and their recommendations as to what they would see would help them better do their job and take the heat and grief away from them.
I think we all would be smart to get some residents to come down who've gone through the process and offer some kind of, you know, you know, their suggestions to...
I agree with you, trustee, but I'd like to...
Good.
I like your recommendations first.
My name is Peter Goll, I'm in Alderman, Tonyboro. I would just suggest, because we've had comments back and forth, that either, I think John has suggested that, I would suggest that we get together with you guys and have a meeting. And either we have suggestions ahead of that meeting or we just meet and talk to each other and then come up with a plan, either change some of the zoning or leave it the way it is.
And like we would be great to see is if you would present to us maybe four or five suggestions. Where someone came to you and said, "We want to build more X, Y, Z." And how did you look at that? And then what recommendations did you give that person? We're trying to see this through your eyes. And then, at the same point, we could also see what the people are asking for. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Anybody else? I agree, we need to find out what the pain points are in the process.
And I think trustee Menudo has a good idea. After we know that, that invites some people in who've been through the process and that would help us even further.
Are any of these requests pending at this point, any of them?
We have one right now. We are concerned about runoff in that particular one.
Did they present to you already?
Yes, and we have asked for more information. You know, a pool is a permanent thing. You know, a pool is a permanent thing on these properties. So if we delay people two or three months, I don't think that's unreasonable. Because that pool is not gonna be filled in in future. It's gonna be there as a permanent part of the property. I can't recall an instance of a pool being filled in and being abandoned.
Are most applications for in-ground or above-ground?
In-ground.
Do we eat not allowed?
In-ground.
We don't allow it above-ground.
There may be above-ground pools in the village. They are surreptitious.
Well, if I get that, since Giselle is here, what kind of complaints do you hear?
We do hear numerous complaints as far as, you know, the pool itself.
What, from the process? From the application?
From the app itself, as far as... I guess from the app itself, as far as the application process, as far as we're streamlining it or whatnot. And because the way the code is written is that the applications are accessory structure, but they're especially purposeful. So they come in, the application as far as submitting, the requirement, the request to the zoning board. And every application, as Mr. Chairman is playing, is certain, you know, at any situation as far as the radium property, if it's smaller than usual or whatnot, as far as squeezing everything into the radium. The accessory structure, you know, code section 252 of accessory buildings, that thirty percent of the radium can, has to be, thirty percent of the radium has to accommodate the, let's say, the pool area itself. Or the quarter quad, if it's one lot. A lot of the applications that come in, sometimes they hug corners, certain corners, there's setbacks. There is no setback requirement. It can be five feet, three feet, ten feet, like you may, like you mentioned. Maybe we should definitely consider setback requirement from side yard radium. Other villages and towns have set setbacks, where there are ten feet, ten feet to twenty feet requirement for side yard radium. So I think maybe we should look into that and say, "This is what it's gonna be." And that'll streamline the application process for the applicants.
Okay, and why don't we give some more thought if you guys come up with some problem scenarios for you guys that'll help us figure out? Again, it may not change anything, but that's fine too. I figured out. And my last suggestion is, just dump it on the new guy and let him do it.
As long as I get, as long as I get free reign, if you could jump in.
I agree. It takes a little extra time. If it takes a little extra time, I don't really have a problem with that.
Well, I think it would be...
The old measure twice, cut once.
You know, what's interesting is, we're probably getting into the season, or maybe we've missed the season by now. But we'll probably get at least an application once. I'll bet you one application a month for the next few months. And if we turn our eyes to what you're talking about, what your concerns are, perhaps we could present three or four of those applications after the fact and be aware of what the, you know, the discussion was and how we looked at things. And that might help you understand what our thinking is. So if we put off this for a few months and let's get some more applications that we begin to digest and have our thinking caps on about what you would wanna know about them, I think, Mr. Chairman, that would be a good idea.
We can present to you a case. We will make it anonymous, and we will present the case to you. And you will see how we look at each particular case.
That'd be great.
And its issues, because each one of them is different.
Sure.
You have a zoning board of appeals so that every case that comes before that board is treated individually. We have attorneys who come before us all the time and say, "But in this case, you did this, and there's precedent," and we repeat to them over and over. Each case is handled individually. That's why you come before a zoning board of appeals. And precedent means nothing. State your case.
Mr. Chairman, it might be helpful to provide the transcript of that here. Whatever sample case that you choose, get the transcript from it so the board can see the actual dialogue back and forth between the board, where you actually enunciate what your concerns are.
Good.
And you do that on the record.
Okay.
That'd be great. The other part of information that could be useful is... I've got a lot of complaints from residents, from people that have existing pools, whether it's from neighbors or other. I mean, one of the issues is that, you know, people party at night when they have pools. And we see a lot of those types of complaints in the village.
No lights, no lights.
Should we set it? Just so we have a, not that it's, just kind of has a target? September first, May, maybe?
May, June, we'll have a few cases on that.
When you feel that you're ready, once you notify us, and then we'll put it on the upcoming, we'll leave it, we'll sort it out, we'll monitor it.
Thank you very much. Okay, do they have any citizen comments on non-agenda? Yes, sir? Would you like to bless more?
You have a good memory. Non-agenda, what's the town of Garden City doing about climate? What's the town of Garden City doing about climate? Yeah. Okay, so you know Brad Stunberg yet? You haven't heard his name?
No.
It's a fifteen-year-old girl who talked to the CO224. She also just taught at Dobbles. She's bringing to the attention of the world that this generation of children are gonna be living on the planet in what is considered to be, well, the sixth extinction. So she's saying things that are like, just so totally correct. And she's not alone. There's a whole bunch of students around the world that are now leaving class and protesting this. They were in front of Diane Feinstein this week. They went to, they're walking around Washington, and they are really bringing their agenda to the senators, the congressmen. How come we're not doing anything about it? For a small town, we have this word "garden" in our name. We can be doing things that promote better living, you know, less use of, well, less use of fossil fuels, particularly cars that are like sitting in the parking lot with people texting and idling. We could find that. New York City has an anti-idling law, and they find people that are, you know about this. We could have that. We could raise money that way. And I'm sure you're not against that.
No, but I don't think we can use civil fortunes in that regard, penalties in that regard, to raise funds.
Well, I'm not suggesting, you know, this is how you balance your budget, but what's New York City doing with that money? You know, they're finding people who are sitting in their cars in front of schools and letting the engine run, and if they're there for more than a minute, it's a one hundred, two thousand dollars.
Okay. Yes, we are very skeptical of it. But we are actually looking at changing the way we use pesticides in our fields. We've already started that.
Okay. Can we ban this product called Roundup?
We don't, we don't use Roundup.
You don't use Roundup?
No, we don't use Roundup.
Do we use Roundup?
Anything with lysophagin in it?
We're putting in all the LED lights throughout the village.
That's not exactly great. They, no, I know. They only talk about the environment, they talk about energy and stuff, but it's, there's things that are not really great about it. But that's another issue. What about banning plastic bags here? Suffolk County has banned plastic bags. Why can't we do that? And straws, you know? Did you see this picture?
Sir, not to interrupt you, okay? And I'm sure you could probably give us forty-seven different examples of the environment.
Sure, I know it's easy tonight, but...
No, but understand this. And what I'm gonna say is not politically correct, okay? I am, I heard that. I am a supporter of a cleaner environment, before I say what I do, okay? But when I sit and I listen to people like AOC who says, "In ten years, twelve years, we're all gonna be gone." Or when people start to talk about how the earth is gonna be a scorched earth in twenty years and ever. I go back forty years ago, when I was sitting in State University of New Poles, when they were sitting there going on and on and on. And the hot button at that point was overpopulation. Do we have any idea where are we going to put all these people?
That's another issue.
We have no place at all to put all these people.
I agree with that.
And my answer is, fly over the United States. We have billions of miles that people can live. So what I'm just saying to you is, is that the things that everyone complained about, okay? First, we had global cooling. Then we had global warming. Neither one of those worked. Now we have global change, which again, I support, and I'm with you. You know, my wife sometimes goes crazy with the straws. I think plastics and everything else, I agree with you a hundred percent. But the thing of it is, is that, like I said, I mean, to sit there and to take any one thing that some fifteen-year-old decided to do, and everyone jumps on the jagwire because it's politically correct. You know, I'm not gonna sit here and start to prepare for the end of the world in, you know, 2035.
You know what? It's not politically correct. It's science. There was this thing about, "Do you believe in climate change?" It's not a question of believing it or not. It is a fact.
I'm sixty-two years old. Here's what I do know. When I was fifteen years old, and there was a massive hurricane or tidal wave that occurred in Russia, I never heard about it. With the age of the internet today, anything happens there, we find out about it in fifteen minutes, okay? I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that you don't have changes today. But again, the environment and the world is constantly changing. And again, what we can do is, we can do things and be more positive with it. But you just can't extrapolate a particular topic or something.
Do you have a environmental advisory board?
Yeah, where are they?
They need...
I'm actually the chairman of it. I'm actually the chairman of it, as a matter of fact. And as a matter of fact, if you come to our next, if you come to our next meeting, the gentleman who's gonna be guest speaking is the person from Adelphi who's gonna talk to us all about managing and maintaining our grass and fields and everything else without using pesticides. So I'm one of the biggest proponents and supporters of that.
Excellent. Because there's a total decimation of the insects. You're sixty-two years old, so wait a second, you remember?
Go to the air cleaning?
Come to our... I wouldn't press this upon you too, or anybody else. We're all old enough, actually, to remember when we drove the car down the street, we had a lot of insects, right? When was the last time you cleaned insects off your windshield? It's important. It's really important. I don't wanna talk to you. Well, some folks is here. Is somebody else a part of the environmental group here? Yes.
Jody Francisco was also one of them. Contact Cameron, she'll let you know what the meeting is. Come, come on. It's in March.
In March? And where is it usually held?
Right here. Oh, it's at the senior senate, just, oh, yeah, because we have the speaker. Because we have a joint between us and the recognition.
Yeah, the chairman, the motion chairman by Christie Lainey. And then I want to fight for the thread. Second hit by Justin. Who's the favorite? If you mind, we're still, we're actually, we're out in half an hour, and we're going to session.